I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Homewood School District, 153, for December 16th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mrs. Biffey?
Here.
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 Mr. Bass?
We have approval of minutes from the regular board meeting of November 11th, 2024, and a special board meeting held on December 12th, 2024. Are there any additions or corrections to either set of minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Removed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have a need for a secretary this evening. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Christine Scully as secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
Am I prepared to be a second?
Welcome to the board, Christine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have to take copious notice. No. You're okay. You just have to sit. It'll be fine.
Your bonus pay for that, too.
Yeah. Okay. You've got double pay. You've got a raise. Yeah. Okay. Are there any future dates?
Yes. This is the last week of school before winter break, so that's exciting. Friday's an early release day for students. Staff will have institute in the afternoon. And then, winter break for two weeks, and we return to our institute day, which is Wellness Day. We're excited to have that again on Monday, January 6th. Students returning on Tuesday, January 7th. And also, I want to point out, this Thursday night, our eighth grade girls' basketball team is playing for the consolation game of the state finals. So they are battling for a third-place medal. So we're super excited for them. They went down Saturday for the Elite Eight. They won their first game, so they're now in the Final Four. So we're excited. And Seventh Grade also made the Final Eight this year in girls' basketball.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Presentations. We have a B-I-N-A public hearing.
Yes. I will call Dr. Trinberger, our business manager, to the front, so he can talk about our bond issue.
Good evening. On August 12th, 2024, the Board of Education approved a life safety amendment for our Willow roof. That amendment was an amount of $2,773,000. Illinois State Board of Education approved that amendment on November 13th, and that approval gives the board the authority to sell life safety bonds to pay for the project. In addition, we have some roofing, or in addition to the roofing work, we have to replace some windows along the roofline at Willow School as part of that project, because these are original to the building, and they are leaking. And there's economies of scale to do that at the same time as the roofwork. And since we lost $1.7 million in the referendum in 2022 due to the 9% decrease in our EAV, it's necessary to sell life safety bonds to pay for all this work. So this evening, we're asking the board to approve a resolution of a tent to sell $2,940,000 in working, or excuse me, life safety bonds. And we're going to pay for that by using monies from the property tax relief grant. So last month, the board approved participation in ISB's 2025 Property Tax Relief Grant. The state is going to give us $1,427,503 this year and add that to our evidence-based funding minimum going forward. In exchange for that, the board is required to abate $1,557,497 from the operating levy for 2024 and 2025. The amount of money that's going to be abated from the operating levy is going to be used to pay for a two-year life safety bond to pay for this work. So once the state finalizes the award for the property tax relief grant, the administration will be bringing forth a final paperwork to sell the bonds either January or February.
Great. Thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Willow staff, your new roof is on the way. All right. Thank you Is there anyone in the audience who has come to speak to the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Come on up, please. And if you could, tell us your name and our comments. We limit people to three minutes. So your name and...
Hello. I am Bridgette McCullough-Favella. I previously worked as the school psychologist at Willow from the 1920 school year until I resigned in January of 2023. And I was coming to comment on the ongoing burnout and turnover that's occurring with special education staff within the district, more specifically at Willow. I know from the time that I started my career at Willow, my caseload drastically increased, and my workload drastically increased. And looking at the numbers from the state report cards, in 2021, 14% of students at Willow had IEPs, and that's increased based on the 2024 state report card to 19.9% of students having IEPs. I know that these were concerns that I had had when I was working there, and I had brought up about our high identification, and also the growing needs of our students, and needing to kind of take a step back, reflect, is this an impact of COVID, of students not having access to early intervention, and us having to kind of meet them where they were at. And it's disheartening to see that the district seems to be kind of taking a wait-to-fail approach rather than a preventative approach of these conversations I know I had initiated while I was there. I know that they're still ongoing, on the best ways to support our students while supporting our staff. In our field, specifically in our special education helper roles, we can kind of be isolated and islands, and there can be a high, there's a high turnover, and there's high burnout. And that's something we know is true for education as a whole right now. But it impacts special education staff in a different way, because, like I said, we're a little bit more isolated and islands. And I just wanted to speak to some of the organizational changes, or like systemic changes, if there's anything in action, or things that can happen, to support the school climate for the staff that is burning out, to help retain them and support them, and also to help our students, too. Because when we are burnt out, it becomes an ethical issue because it impacts our efficacy in providing those high-tier and good services for our students that need them. I know during my time, I can just speak to my experience, is that there's the sense of coherence of basically having an understanding of the structure and the resources that you have, and the supports, so that when you are impacted by those stressors, which are inevitable in our field, that you can respond to them in a more adaptive way, rather than having to kind of build the plane as you're flying it. And a big key is having some of that administrative support of, I know during my time, I was frequently told that...
You have about 30 seconds.
Okay. During my time, I was told that I was hired because I was good at organization, to kind of figure it out and put systems together myself, but looking for that support from higher up to create change so that the pattern doesn't continue.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who's come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Yolka, come on up.
Hi there. My name is Yolka Ward. I'm a former employee of this district, and I'm currently happily retired. And also, in my eighth year as library trustee for the Homewood Library, the Homewood Public Library. Approximately two weeks ago, on December 3rd, I attended a legislative breakfast, which happens once a year where library board members from all, you know, all over the South suburbs are invited. And then we get legislators to come and give us information as to what's happening in Springfield. This time around, this was led by the Aisle, A-I-S-L-E, the Association of Illinois School Library Educators. And they are very concerned that the majority of the public school districts in Illinois do not have licensed librarians running their libraries. In a lot of situations, you have people that retire, and then they've had good support staff, and then paraprofessionals take over running the library. So currently, in Springfield, there will be filed, the Aisle and its partners will propose a creation of a Licensed School Librarian Task Force, which will be filed through the Illinois General Assembly in the spring of 2025. And the goal is to make legislative recommendations on how to ensure that Illinois K-12 schools consider budget for and employ licensed school librarians in future academic years, using various resources, go on and on. So I brought this flyer, so I'll leave it with you, and you can take a look at it. There's a website. I think it would be in the best interest of our schools to have properly licensed librarians running the program. We all know kids are suffering these days when it comes to reading. We tend to read on our phone more than we tend to read a piece of paper. And I am pleased with the education that my three children received in our district, and I'm very pleased that they still read a book before they go to bed instead of checking their phone. And all three have been very, have had very successful careers doing that. So I would like to see that for future generations. And I believe that if we support this, of course, it's always money, but, you know, our librarians write the grants, the per capita grant that comes, you know, has to be written every January. So if that hasn't been happening...
You have about 30 seconds.
Okay. I would like to see that. So who would like this?
Just bring it on.
All right.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone else who's come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Come on up.
I have been in contact with...
Could you tell us your name first?
Oh, my name is Titania Stokes. I'm a member of Foundation 153. I'm also a parent. My son attends James Hart. He's in the seventh grade. So I just have a few questions. One, can someone, who chooses the adaptive learning platforms? Are they voted on? Like peer assessment, staff, like who, how are those determined, those platforms?
They're selected through the curriculum department.
The curriculum department, they're choo, okay. So are staff trained on those platforms?
Teachers are trained how to use the platforms.
Teachers are trained on all the platforms?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's good to know. So if errors occurred or found, if there's a discrepancy, how are they handled far as, like with the technology department? How long would it take to resolve the issue? Because I have the issue ongoing, and I just want to know, is there a timeframe that's allowed when it's affecting a grade?
It would be a conversation between tech and, and building principal and the teacher to try to get that rectified.
Okay. Because it's been six weeks. So hopefully, I can get the issue resolved soon. My next question is, I guess you answered it, because I wanted to know when changes, if there's errors discovered, how they're addressed. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we're going to move on. Are there any responses to any questions or concerns raised by the audience at previous meetings?
There are none.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any board members who have any reports from any board committees or any other events you have attended?
Yes, I have a report for Education of Progress. We had a meeting last week. We went over our press policy updates. Many of the things that I'll be discussing are up for approval tonight. One of the things we specifically went over was our accelerated placement program. We have a lot of updated information on that moving forward. We plan to form a committee in the spring to talk about changes to that policy. We also discussed the adoption of our equity policy statement. Beginning our school, we also are going to be getting, we're also going to begin our school improvement plan. And teams will be formed at Willow and Churchill to conduct an audit of our current practices. We often discuss about many things that we do well in the district, but there's also things that we may not do so well. So we always believe there's always room for improvement. So we plan to have that committee formed and go over that and see how we can improve in different areas moving forward. And that's it.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Personnel met, the personnel committee met last Thursday, December 12th. Basically, you'll see some of this information rolling out probably over the next couple of months. Our two main topics, obviously, are unfortunately, are, I shouldn't say unfortunately, unfortunate for us, but celebratory for our upcoming retiree, our Director of Curriculum, with that smile, don't, not too big of a smile back there, please. Thank you. Ms. Shae Fine will be retiring at the end of this year. And then, of course, our superintendent, we're beginning to look at what that search process is going to look like to fill Dr. McCallister's shoes in 2026. So those are two main topics that we focused in on at the meeting.
Great. Thank you. And I just want to mention that Alex, who couldn't be here tonight, and Scott, were invited to present at the annual school board, school administrator...
Joint annual conference.
Joint annual conference to present on, let's tell them.
Basically talked about advocacy, and how you can work with your legislators to try to get something done in Springfield, which we were successful.
They were, we were successful at it. So they were invited to speak about it, and it was really quite an honor to be able to, to be asked to speak at that conference. It's a big deal. Okay. Superintendent's report. Yes.
I'm going to go to the laptop here if I can slide you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to talk briefly. One of the items on the agenda for this evening is approval of Vision 2030. And Vision 2030, just so everybody is familiar with this, you're going to be hearing a lot about it statewide. It is, it is an initiative that is being sponsored, promoted by about every professional agency, and I'll show you these groups right here. Every professional agency in the state of Illinois is behind Vision 2030. About 10 years ago, you may have heard of Vision 2020, which was this idea that by the year 2020, we in the state of Illinois would have various things in place, a big part of which was equitable state funding. And so, as a result, in part, because of Vision 2020, we ended up with evidence-based funding, which has done a great job of dispersing dollars to districts that need it more than others. So you can see a lot of the professional groups, IESA school administrators, Principals Association, School Board Association, school business officials, the regional offices, special ed directors. I mean, it is truly all the professional organizations in the state of Illinois. So what is Vision 2030 that the board will be approving formally tonight? I want to show you this. I always love this picture when I tell people Springfield is never short of legislative action when it comes to education. And this book, I'm sorry, books, plural, literally sit on my bookshelf. And you can see, that's the school code, the laws that govern schools 24 years ago. This, these are the volumes that govern schools today. They keep adding and adding and adding legislative mandates for schools. And so we're trying to get in front of the curve, we in this profession, to have a voice in Springfield with what happens in our schools. So there's three basic areas. I'm not going to read these to you. We'll send out publicity to this effect. But the first area is future-focused learning. So this idea that we want to prepare kids, you've heard this expression before, for jobs that we don't even know exist. The second area is shared accountability, looking at the way we assess kids, and not just judging them by hitting a benchmark, but rather the growth that students are able to display. And then the third area is continuing that funding that I referenced earlier from Vision 2020, making sure that Springfield continues to live up to its goal of $350 million of new money every year, which since they did EBF, they have accomplished that. They have met the $350 million each year. Here are the four main goals of Vision 2030, keeping our students safe. And unfortunately, you turn on the news today, and we had yet another tragedy in Wisconsin, a school shooting. So that is always at the forefront of all of our minds. Keeping high-quality educators. We have a lot of our staff here this evening, so thank you for being here. But we all know that it's as difficult as ever to find high-quality teachers and to keep them. Enhancing post-secondary success, not just college, but preparing alternatives for kids who perhaps may not want to attend college. And then, again, finding out what's working in our schools. So that's a brief overview of Vision 2030. But again, I want you to understand, it's not just District 153 that is going to be behind this. You're going to hear about it statewide. It's, it was just approved at the joint annual conference that Shelley referenced earlier. That was where this was unveiled for everybody. But I wanted to introduce all of you to it this evening, and we'll ask the board to formally approve this with a resolution later on in the meeting. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. We have several consent agenda items tonight. The first is to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for January 2025. The second is to adopt new and revised policies, press 116 and press 117. Are there any questions on the new policies on the board, in the audience?
The board policy manual is online under the, yeah, it's posted there. And once, once these policies, these are revisions of what's currently posted, once they are adopted, they will be replacing the policy manual that's currently there.
But you'll be able to find it on the district website. Okay. Personnel report.
Disposal of the elliptical.
Oh, sorry. We need to dispose of a non-working elliptical machine at James Hart. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Sullivan filled out that form, I wanted to make sure we got that.
From the, oh, yes, from the audience. Is it not working because nobody's on it making it work, or the machine doesn't work? Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was the machine, not the people. Okay. We have personnel report.
Yes. You can see the various items there. I will point out Jasmine McDonald, who, you know, the state has introduced a lot of creative licensing programs to try to get people who are currently serving as assistants into certified positions. And Jasmine is a beneficiary of such a program. So she is finishing her schoolwork now, December, and and we are going to be employing her in a full-time position second semester.
Great.
Jasmine's a great example of that program at work.
Great. Any questions from the board on the personnel report? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in items 7A, 7B, 7C, and 7D.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries. And we have many action agenda items tonight. The first is the second payment of November 2024 bills, and the first payment of December 2024 bills. Are there any questions on the bills from the board, from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
We would find the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education authorized a second payment on November 2024 bills, and the first payment of December 2024 bills, in an amount not to exceed $2,501,285.46.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes. 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 Motion carries. We have mid-year teacher resignation.
Yes. As I referenced earlier, it is harder than ever to find educators to fill positions in our schools. So several years ago, the General Assembly passed a law that allows schools to pursue suspension of license for certified tenured teachers who resign a position within 30 days of the start of the school year. Last year, they added to that law, and it now applies to all teachers, tenured and non-tenured. And each summer, I send out a notice to our staff saying, we are nearing that 30-day window when school starts. It's the last thing I want to do, but I'm also very forthright with the staff, that we will pursue, per the state law, people who resign mid-year suspension of license. And so there is a recommendation for that here.
Any questions from the board, from the audience? Come on up.
I just have questions, right? Is there a situation where I resigned, and I resigned in, I think I already mentioned, in December of 2023 or 2022, and that was the anniversary of September 3rd, about a senior nine was suspended college, and there was 10 years later, and this law, so you didn't extend this non-tenure stamp, and you still have no different reason, but why? In that certain stand, it was okay.
Where did you seek employment?
I, in the city of Indianapolis.
In Indiana? There's your difference.
So if I would have gotten for nothing, I would have gone to the other one.
We would have pursued suspension of your license.
I think so.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education reject the resignation of Wendy Gatewood, social worker at Willow School, as per Section 24-14 of the Illinois School Code, 105ILCS 5/24-14, which prohibits a certified staff member from resigning during a school term in the event that the staff member/teacher accepts another certified position elsewhere.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mrs. Biffey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. We have adoption of certificate of tax levy.
Yes. I will ask Dr. Trinberger to return to the microphone to talk about the upcoming tax levy. I did turn off the microphone, so you want to flip that switch.
Before I talk about the 2024 tax levy, I want to take a couple of minutes to talk about what transpired between 2022 and 2023, because there's been a lot of questions because there's been a very significant increase in tax bills. So for 2022, we expected the levy to go up $4.2 million based on the ballot question the board adopted and a successful referendum. However, from the time the board adopted that question to the time the county implemented the rate increase, property values in the district dropped 9%. So that resulted in the district only receiving $2.5 million of the $4.2 million that was anticipated. So in response to that, the board worked with the General Assembly to get legislation passed to enable the board to access that $1.7 million in 2023 and beyond. In addition to the $1.7 million, there is an inflationary increase of 5%, or about another $1.1 million for the District 153 share of the tax bill for 2023. We also had a reassessment year for 2023 in South Cook County that resulted in assessments increasing anywhere from 40 to 60%, and that had a very profound effect on the tax burden of the district. In 2022, 61.2% of the burden was paid by homeowners. In 2023, that jumped to 71.5%. So as a consequence of the, the tax levy sought by the board was 2.8... the tax levy sought by the board was $2.8 million. The actual increase in bills to homeowners was $4.2 million because of the shift in tax burden. So the net impact of that, 59% of the increase in the 2023 tax bills for a homeowner for their 153 share, 59% of that increase was due to the shift in the burden by the county. So when we go back and look at what the board promised the community and what the board ultimately received, if this burden had not changed, we would have been actually probably slightly under what we expected when the ballot question was adopted. However, the fact that these assessments changed so drastically and had a profound impact on the bills, that was beyond the control of the district. So we will have a better illustration of that where we can share at the January board meeting of the impact of a typical home in the district. But there have been some questions at board meetings as well as emails to the board about that. So that gives a little bit of clarity for what happened in 2023. So tonight, we're asking the board to adopt an operating levy of $21,840,000, which represents a 3.4% increase over last year for $707,498. We're also asking for an increase in any potential new property up to $323,729. That increase would only impact new values in the district, not existing homeowners. So the total levy for the operating side, $21,840,000. Additional $3,622,923 on the debt levy. For a total of estimated $25,462,923. This represents about a 2.9% increase for a typical homeowner for their 153 portion of their tax bill for next year.
Thank you. Any questions for Eric? From the audience? Yes. Could, can you just at least stand up? Because we're, people are watching this somewhere. Yeah, of course. Online. On the school district website. You're welcome. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief business, chief school business official that the school, that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to levy 2024 taxes and certain purposes as attached. Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education approve the 2024 certificate of tax levy for real estate taxes to be paid in 2024 as attached. Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education adopt the resolution allocating 2024 tax levy to individual funds for the school district's property tax limitations law as attached.
Is there a second? Roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Motion carries. We have the supplemental tax levy resolution.
So as part of the 2022 bond issue, at the time those bonds were sold, there were some inflationary increases built in due to prospective increases in the debt service extension base. So the board needs approval supplemental levy for $16,154.81 for the 2026 tax levy.
Any questions for Eric? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the board approve the resolution authorizing a supplemental tax levy to pay the principal of an interest on outstanding limited bonds of the district.
Second? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Motion carries. We have the sale of school fire prevention and safety bonds.
So this is the action item for the public hearing for earlier this evening.
Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that upon completion of the public hearing, that the Board of Education approve the sale not to exceed $2,940,000. School, school fire prevention and safety bonds for the purpose of conforming its existing facilities and house students to the building code promulgated by the State Board of Education of the State of Illinois by altering and constructing said facilities and having equipment purchased and installed therein.
Second? Roll call. Sorry. Any questions from the audience? Okay. Roll call, please. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. We have approval of the resolution supporting Vision 2030.
That's what I talked about a short while ago.
Any questions from the board? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the resolution declaring the district support of Vision 2030.
Second?
Roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Motion carries. We have to award the Willow Roof Bid to DCG Roofing.
Yes, so similar to what we did with the Churchill Roof last year, the administration worked with Garland, which is a manufacturer of roofing materials, to develop bid specifications for the replacement of the roof and provide a 30-year warranty. This process allows the district to complete a project without the use of an architect or construction manager and saves about 17.5% on the cost of the project. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting on November 22nd. It was attended by eight prospective bidders. Six companies submitted bids on December 6, 2024. The bids were reviewed with the Finance and Property Committee on December 11th. The bid recap is attached. The committee recommends the base bid and a replacement of the 59 roof drains. Work will begin at the end of the school year and estimated takes 60 days. We recommend awarding the bid to DCG Roofing in an amount of $2,441,966 for the base bid and drain replacements with unit costs of $5.60 per square foot for wet areas, $10 per square foot for metal deck replacement, $45 per square foot for gypsum deck replacement, and $1,200 per panel for a tech and deck replacement.
Any questions on the bid? From the board?
Eric, can you, I'm just looking at the, I don't know if this is important, but I'm looking at the document that's posted. I think the first number, the 2 million, I think you read it. I think it was different on the sheet I'm looking at. I just want, I don't know if that.
So we're awarding the base bid of $2,321,904 and the drain assembly for 59 drains for $120,062. So I can bind those two numbers for the actual board of work.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a problem if the wrong number was perfect.
Thank you for noticing that. Okay, any questions from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education award the bid for Willow Roof Project to DCG Roofing in an amount of $2,441,966 for the base bid and drain replacements with unit costs as attached.
Second? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Motion carries. Roofs are not all that exciting unless you happen to be underneath them and know how badly it's needed. Okay, we have approval of equity policy statement.
Yes, for the past two years, our district has been engaged in ongoing work with Deep Equity from Corwin Learning to talk about inclusive practices throughout our district. We had a steering committee, Ms. Biffey was a part of that steering committee. And it's been a pleasure to work with them at the building level to kind of see this in action. And those conversations are ongoing to this day. As a matter of fact, I just had a call after school with the Churchill staff and our facilitators. I also work with the district leadership team to craft what you have in front of you now, which is a formal policy of statement from the Board of Education supporting this work. And more importantly, to continuing to emphasize equity in resource allocation throughout our district. And so the document that you have was the result of many people's efforts. And I'm excited to bring it to you tonight for formal inclusion into our policy manual.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the board? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the equity policy statement as attached.
Second?
Roll call, please. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. We have approval of a new professional negotiations agreement. And before I turn this over to Dr. McAllister, I just want to say a few words. We decided to do our negotiations through a process called interest-based bargaining this time. We had done it before in the district, but it'd been several contracts. And this was an amazing experience for everyone who was in that room. We looked very carefully at every aspect of our district and what our common interests were and how we could meet those interests. The thing with negotiations is you know, nobody's going to get everything they want, but everybody is going to move to a place where things are as good as they can possibly be. And I believe that we did that. We met five weekends?
At least.
But just in our big, in our large group, five weekends from Friday at 3:30 or 4 o'clock until we were done, very often at 9, 10 o'clock at night. And then we would come back Saturday morning and work through the entire day. So the people that were in that room gave up their weekends all, fall. The respect in that room was, quite frankly, something that everybody should get the opportunity to be a part of. And I want to mention the staff members that sat in the room. Carrie Sullivan, Sully led the charge for the HEA. Lisa Went. Colleen Spain. Katie Kwasnica. Kathy Jones. George Santiago and Crystal Gladney. And then on behalf of the board was Roderick Booth, Alex Bosch, and myself. And administrators were Eric and Scott. The really amazing thing that I witnessed was that the HEA members who sat in that room did not advocate for themselves. They advocated for every staff member. They put aside their personal needs and wants to advocate for every single staff member and what was best for the entire staff. And quite frankly, for the students. Because if it's good for the staff, it's good for the students. And that is the approach that we all took for the 85 or 90 hours that we spent together. And then the many side sessions that each team had on its own and small groups of accommodation from each team had together. I believe, and seeing the results of the vote confirms, that we came up with an incredibly solid contract that is in the best interest of all parties. And I am really, really proud to have been a part of this contract negotiation. I've been negotiating on teams in this district for over 30 years. And this is the last one that I did. And I have to say, I think it might be the one I'm the most proud of. We have a really good document that's going to take us forward that will be good for everyone for years to come. So kudos to the HEA team for really doing some hard, hard work. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I don't know that I can say much to top what Shelley just said. Other than this, the HEA has a challenging job in that they're trying to write a contract for not only certified staff, teachers, social workers, psychologists, but also ESPs, classified staff. And so when you're in the room trying to negotiate one document to address all of those constituencies, it is a challenge. We were keenly aware, in light of the economy the past several years, that we need to maintain our competitiveness with our neighbors, especially in negotiating a contract, while also being incredibly cognizant of, you know, Eric just talked about our tax levy. Like, we made a commitment to our community that we are going to do everything in our power to protect their dollars and use them as wisely as possible. So we feel great about the contract that we're asking the board to approve tonight, a three-year contract. But we're also very confident that we have in place a plan to move forward and keep the district financially solvent for years to come. So, yeah, so kudos to the negotiating team who Shelley mentioned. I'd also like to thank Tom Jermenski. Tom is the most recent HEA president. And I have an opportunity to work closely with all the presidents. And Tom literally is right through the wall from my office. So he and I have close proximity, which makes conversations easy. But he is a tremendous advocate for all of you as well. And I appreciate his partnership in doing what's best for our district. So thank you, Tom. So with that.
And let me just add one more thing, and that is, before we approve this, if you weren't on this team negotiating this time, think about doing it sometime. Yes, it's a lot of hours, but you will, and that probably discouraged every single one of you sitting here right now. So maybe I shouldn't have said how many, but you, sorry, Sully. But you, I'm looking at the people who are here now. And you guys are the future of the strength of this district. And this is just another piece in the foundation. But for this, the foundation to stay strong, everyone has to step up and take a turn if this is your strength or interest. So think about how you can participate in this effort the next time because it is only as good as the people in the room. And you guys are all really good, and we would love to see you in the room. I won't see you in the room.
I won't either.
Scott won't either. We'll ride by on our bicycles. But, okay, enough. Any questions on the new professional negotiations agreement from the board? From the audience? Yes. Yep. Thank you. Narrowly.
Yes, three-year contract, 5% in year one, 4.5% in years two and three, 4.5% each. 4.5% year two, 4.5% year three. Yoka recruited me.
There's some other really interesting parts of the contract too, I think, that are perhaps unique to our district. Okay, is there a motion to approve the new professional negotiations agreement?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve a new three-year professional negotiations agreement for the years of 2025 through 2028 between the Board of Education and the Homewood Education Association.
Second. Roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, yes, and yes. Great. Tom, you'll hang around afterwards. We'll have a, we have a whole bunch of stuff to sign. Okay. It's a school building. We'll have to go somewhere else. We have approval of memos of understanding.
Yes, as part of the negotiation process, there were several, what we call MOUs, Memorandums of Understanding. It's basically an agreement between both parties, but not going to be part of the written contract moving forward. So it's kind of a one-time arrangement, if you will. So there are seven, seven different MOUs that we're asking you to approve, six of which came directly from the negotiation, and they're all related in some way, shape, or form. The other one is related to the teacher vacancy grant. This is money that we receive from the state, and we basically use that money to offer to staff to pursue endorsements in hard-to-fill areas, and we've had a lot of staff take advantage of that. And the only thing we're asking is that this MOU specifically requires the teacher to stay in our district for two years after they get that endorsement, and if they leave before then, then they have to reimburse us the difference between the normal tuition and what the grant is providing. So it's basically a promise that they'll stay here in exchange for a nice endorsement.
Right. Thank you. Any questions on the MOUs from the Board? From the audience? Yes.
Like in terms of a cohort? Because we have a cohort right now, there's some of you seated out there right now who are part of that ESL cohort. You know, if we get enough interest, again, it has to go toward a hard-to-fill area, so that's why ESL fit that role. If we could get one for sped, that would be great, but it's based on desirability from the staff. So Kathy Shaflein is seated in the back. She sent out a survey, and we'll continue to do that. We have one more year, if the state funds it, one more year of the grant next year.
And the other part of that answer is, we would love to do more of that.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the memos of understanding as attached.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Motion carries. We have employment.
Yes, three individuals in the employment. Andre Gordon, cashier at Churchill, Ebony Hodges, an assistant at Willow, Jada Baron, an RBT assistant at Willow. I will point out, RBTs are one specific part of this contract that is new, new-ish, and basically an RBT is a registered behavior technician, and it's somebody that we are employing who has a unique endorsement to deal with behaviors that are outside of the norm, let's say. So we're excited to offer that to our staff, to get that certification and to be able to work in an RBT position, and in this case, employing somebody immediately for work at Willow.
Great. Very happy to find this person. Okay, any questions from the Board? From the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of Andre Gordon effective December 10, 2024, and Ebony Hodges and Jada Baron effective January 6, 2025, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent, conditioned only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report and upon receipt no later than December 20, 2024, of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second. Roll call, please. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Are there any discussion items to make?
There are none.
All right. Is there any written communication to the Board? We have an executive session that we need to discuss the employment of the superintendent. We will return only to adjourn. Yeah, and before we go in, we'll get everything signed, so you don't have to hang around. Okay? You are all welcome to stay to watch us adjourn later on, but truly, that's all we will be doing. All right? Thank you all for coming.
Yep.
The best time, the best thing to do would be to talk to Dr. McAllister, and we'll find a time that we can all meet. Okay, thank you.